Okay.
Tracy, you want to take over?
Okay, Brennaman.
Here.
Kill.
Here.
Monahan.
Here.
Horn.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
And Jones.
Yep.
Mayor Manita's absent with notice.
Is there any additions to the agenda? Maintain a motion to approve his agenda.
I'll move.
Second. Any, uh, what's we're going to move for? Peter? We're going to play. Any discussion? Thank you. Nope? All is there?
Yeah.
opposed? Looks to approve minutes from the last meeting.
So move.
Thank you.
Oh, no, actually, I'm rescinding that outside.
I'll move.
There is discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
On the stage.
Okay.
Approved bills submitted and payment.
Make a motion to approve bills as submitted.
Second. Somebody have any questions? Somebody have any questions? They'll call Wood individually. Nelson?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Kill?
Yes.
Burn?
Yep.
Arden?
Yes.
Not many yeses. None of them are ordered through resolutions, applications, or hearings. Move on to visitors. Any visitors at this time want to be recognized? Merlin? Tony? I don't know your name.
Mark.
Mark? Want to be recognized?
What's that?
You want to be recognized?
I'll just hide in the back early.
Uh, moving on to reports. Chief? Your show.
Good evening, councilors. Uh, kind of recap, uh, last year. Last year, we ran 282 total calls, just a little uptick from the prior year. Still about a seventy percent, uh, those calls are medical related, whether it's, uh, immuno-medical, trauma, car accidents, uh, something of that sort. Update on the officers for 2018. I'll be continuing as the chief for another year. My first assistant fire is Adam Erickson, second assistant fire Matt Horn, uh, first assistant rescue Connor Warthams, second assistant rescue Linda Hartman, secretary Donnie Rolfson, and treasurer James Buss is our officer lineup for the upcoming year. And really what I want to ask you guys is what do you want, uh, in the month of reports? I know on times I've kind of thrown off trainings, meetings, but I really want to find out the information you're interested in as far as what we have going on.
That's right.
Number, number of calls is important, basically. Training is always on that informative. So I said, I just want to make sure we have a good open forum between, uh, the department and the council here and then any question, whether it's in this forum or, uh, I'll call on myself and I'll be happy to answer it for you. Guess that's all I have, really.
All right. Anybody got anything to chief? On behalf of the council, will you thank the newly elected officials themselves?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you guys for your support.
Thanks, chief. Jesse, Chamber Economic Development Director.
Good evening, your pack. It is my report for the month of December. Some highlights here. I was hoping to look at the low light. Uh, the meeting of Perfect Artemis was canceled. Which not recall, Perfect Artemis was a hair care product manufacturer who should have built a 200,000's perfect facility. Over the Christmas break, they were approached by a company about possibly selling the business to a set of company. And so they, they decided to postpone the meetings until they made a decision hopefully in February. So I'll keep you updated on what happened there. I know there is a lot of sounds that were in the running and a lot of disappointment in the region on their cancellation. You might have seen in the, in the news last night Hartford was on KDLT. They highlighted our daycare RFP that we are quoting for. They found it on Facebook on Friday and a reporter called me Monday morning to see if we could do an interview. And she came by and we did a little interview and she also interviewed Ashy Okan at Christ Lutheran Church daycare. We got a lot of hits up at Facebook. We had 1,400 people look at our post about the RFP. Had probably close to 130 people click on the actual link and go to our website. It's just on Friday. And Monday, we had a lot of traffic from the before as well. So a lot of great exposure on that. I think I've had about four or five different parties contact me now about submitting information for the RFP. And now they go from Hartford. I'll take the back. One is from Hartford. They've actually contacted me. That doesn't mean there's not people working on a proposal behind the scenes, but I am very optimistic about what we're going to see out of this. So. Anything, any questions on the RFP? We, the HADC have been talking and that's just another conversation with some other people. It was not enough name recognition for Hartford and the Sioux Falls region. So we will be likely February, maybe March, doing a hashtag hype and park first campaign. We'll be delivering coffee and baked goods to developers in Sioux Falls, contractors, commercial realtors, some of the larger residential realtors, um, and then a few other folks as well that kind of just say, hey, we're here, we're growing without your help. And if you want to help, come on out. So sit tuned on that. If you want to be involved, we'd love to have you. We'll probably do it on a Tuesday or Wednesday morning, maybe two or three times. Just send everybody out to go people and then we're going to specially design the boxes and coffee, um, carass with Hartford information on them. So it's not just a piece of paper they can throw away. It's actually one of them in the break room, sitting there. And if maybe they read one fact, that's one fact more than they knew before about Hartford. Other than that, any questions about your report? Anything going on? Chris, thank you.
City engineer report.
Well, beginning with the Swenson Parks Force Complex, we've got the field survey all complete out there. We've got it back in the office. We're wrapping the background. We're getting ready to do design work on that. Uh, so we'll be busy with designing that project over the coming weeks. We have sent some letters out to review agencies. We're starting to get some of the responses back and make sure we've got all our highs down here. These crossed there.
What's a review agency?
Uh, like game fishing parks and, um, uh, the DNR, those types of agencies, governmental agencies that have some jurisdiction on different types of projects. So we just send them a letter. Usually we get a response back that says they approve the project.
Okay.
Um, on the Nicholson Road project, we're, you know, working through that design as well. Currently, we're designing the, uh, box culverts and the drainage system there. We are, we've heard back, we've had some correspondence with the 404 permit. That seems to be going forward. We expect to hear, to get that permit here in the coming weeks, I would expect, but everything seems to be okay there. And we are working on a real development loan. Uh, an engineering study for that, for that, uh, loan. And I might break the trail. I know the report, we're just waiting for spring to come along so they can finish their punch list items there. As soon as things thaw, they'll get those items done and we'll be able to find that job out. On the force count side, uh, ten, tended a couple of planning and zoning meetings, uh, reviewing their design standards and subdivision rigs. Last meeting was design standards, so we've got those in front of them. We've had a review on the Rebox Edition Platte. We've submitted plans for the slurry seal for next year, so city had, city of Sioux Falls has that and we'll let that project. We set some pins down in the, along the, um, the creek bottom where the trail's going to go between fighter and mains. We know where the property lines are out there. Got that done and we have done some reviews for Kelly Point Second Edition on the Platts. Sports Complex Industrial Park Plan. We've also got two preliminary plans that just came in late last week. And one of those for the nap property and the other one, what was it? The second one? Oh, uh, DEPs for South Main Edition. So further nights later. So we've got those two plans in our office. Everybody will know.
So where's the Rebox Edition?
That was, oh, that's the plat that came through for the counties project on the Colton Road. The, where the, it goes by the cemetery. They had a plat there that, um, traded a little parcel because of how they, yeah, changed out the line over here. They could, if it's going to the cemetery or what will happen there.
They swung it out and so they replatted that and then that property is going to just be part of the cemetery now and given it to them.
First, is anybody got any questions?
Yep. What's the, uh, so are we on track on Nicholson for bidding project in?
April is overshooting for right now.
April bid?
April.
Or April open?
April bid.
May or?
We, yeah. I mean, we need, our, our goal is to get our plans done in March so we can send them out to the DNR folks. Cause they've got to review, they've got their funding involved with it. And that usually, you know, we usually budget a month for them to review and to get comments changed back to them. So that's kind of the timetable we're on.
Good. You, uh, you mentioned the Swenson.
Yep.
Force complex drafting that?
Yep.
Is that 20 acres of why did those circles a straight line or is that 17 acres with a crooked line?
It's twen-, it's the whole piece there. Twenty acres.
So it's square?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, grades everything from the north property to the south property line.
I was going to say, it's, it's the whole.
Yeah.
It's the remain.
Oh, so, so this is just a grading plan?
Right.
This isn't layout plan. This is grading.
Grading plan, yeah.
All right. Okay. Anybody got anything else? All right. Thanks, Mr. Goldwood Works, Craig?
I'm just going to hit a few of the highlights here. Uh, like Mitch said, the slurry seal, that's actually all from bid right now. Bid letting us February 1st on that. So we'll still know at that time what the price is coming at. Equipment, everything's back together. It seems to be running good right now. Culverts on Western, but you guys probably noticed all them are filling up over there on the, oh, it's actually not in city limits. It's actually county. So I have made contacts about DOT, the county, and all the water to see if they can figure out where the water's coming from. We think it's just drained out from that field yet. It was like that last year a little bit. I told them, I said, you're going to want to keep an eye on it because it's your culprit. So they're going to be keeping an eye on that hopefully. ISO, I did talk to, uh, Robert Holso with ISO and he sent to me over some information that I need to get together yet for him. He went along with the fire department stuff. Uh, he worked, got some of that tool and we'll work on that here next few weeks, getting that ready for him and get it done. Ice rink is up and ready to go. Um, if it doesn't melt out and dry up this week, we'll have an ice cream rink. Otherwise, we're going to let her go. So, um, Terry finished that up today and got that done. Girl scout, uh, they're dogways containers. Uh, they did arrive. We've, um, I've met with Travis, one of the scout, one of the girl scouts and went over where they're going to go exactly. We got them all staked. The locate's been called in. I sent an email out to both DOT and the county to make sure they are okay with it or quick to get permits to put them in there. I did get a blessing from the state today from Travis stressing. Um, he said, since we're, the way the trail's been looking so far along the highway 38, he said, we're doing an excellent job keeping it up. And he said, go ahead and put them in. He says, not going to worry about it. Just going to add it to their prior permit. So. So that one's taken care of. I hope to hear back from Shannon tomorrow. If I do, we will be planning on putting those in this week. So. But you still two page report. Otherwise, uh, meetings, that's up. Um, I did have a meeting here last week with, uh, DOT, MPO, and the county. I'm already getting started on a center change out here on Western Avenue. I can see why their projects take so long now because there's 10 to 12 people from DOT. We're on the telecom or whatever from Pier and then up at DOT here. We spent about an hour and a half and I don't know if we got a whole lot really. Few changes in some of the wording of the contract. They're actually going to try to go, um, next couple of weeks or a couple of months here, they're going to try to have a consultant, uh, already picked out. And at that point, they'll be doing a bunch of, uh, surveys and traffic counts, stuff like that to see what they think and then get our input on it too, whether it's going to be three lane, four lane, what we think it's going to, what we think we need and stuff like that. So they're going to be working with us all time to make sure it fits Hartford's growth needs in the 20, 25, 50 years. So. Otherwise, the only other thing is they got, we are burning our tree pile out there. Most are probably seeing a smoke and stuff like that. We finally found some days without wind. So we're letting her go. And then the only other thing I got is just want to say thanks for the raise. So that's all I got.
With that, that's a bridge and everything when they do that interchange.
Yep. They'll be doing, they're going to be, the bridge will be getting it set to their standard. So you'll actually have a site distance like you need on it.
Yep.
Um, we're looking at the width now. They're going to do a lot of traffic counts, both going south and north to find out, um, where they need to go. They'll go, right now, they're going to put, they're figuring it as a rural bridge. So they'll be doing the 300 feet on each side. But they said it more likely be an urban one by the time they get around designing. So they'll probably just go back to the 100 foot. So they don't have to move the poaches anymore than they have to up there. So. There's, it'll take a while, but they also said that, um, there are some projects from Humboldt going toward Mitchell and that in their region up there that might get delayed. So these might get bumped up. They're not sure yet.
So is that what they did at Del Rapids, Mitch? Is that what they're thinking they're going to do here? Kind of something like?
It'll be a complete, complete rebuild. Yeah.
Like they did at Dells where they tore it all up?
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Yep. They'll be doing a lot of, uh, working with the businesses up there and a lot of informational meetings, stuff coming up. So.
Okay.
All right. Any other? All right. Thanks, Craig. Finance officer report.
Okay. Um, so at the top, I have the totals for the end of the year, um, from 2016 to 2017. Um, I've also, um, provided the committee funds. And in the box with the bill report, I just highlighted some of the abnormal, um, bills that we're paying this month. Um, as well as letting you know what prepaid bills we took care of. Uh, there's some explanation on the password vaults, um, that we purchased, um, there as well as the special assessment. So if you have any questions on that, let me know. Uh, but those are part of the bill packet that you voted on. Also, we do need to know, um, tonight if you're going to go to the municipal day at the legislature. So if you could let me know on that tonight, um, we need to get that, um, submitted. Um, and then also, um, published in the paper this week and next week, you will notice the election petitions will be available. Um, we have three positions open this year, um, up for election. You can start getting petitions on January 26th and they will be due no later than 5:00 PM on the 23rd of February. So I've also included a calendar of events. Um, otherwise, do you have any questions?
If you're with me, um. The platinum for Meyer, Myers, Meyer Henry Sergeant, LLP, $14,820, Mickelson, Moak Bond, Bond Council. We probably talked about it. I don't remember that. Where's the connection there?
So the loan we got from the state for the Mickelson Road project, our SRF loan? Yeah. Has to be bonded. That's the bond council. So they do all the paperwork. It's about a hundred page report that they submit to the state. It's required to, to issue bonds.
Okay.
We have that every time we do a bond. Yeah. Um, it is, uh, we can submit that as an expense against that loan payment. And, you know, all counts as an expense on the project.
So I can remember Mr. Meyer Henry standing at that podium about two, three years ago. On the other side of the fence. I can't remember what the issue was now, but do you remember what I'm talking about?
No, he's been here a couple of times. I know he's talked about it. Oh, I, I, yeah.
He was, he was, uh, he was.
Bill Hawkins.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And, and, uh, and then so we hired him. We, I mean.
He's been our bond counsel for, since I've been here.
Okay.
He's done about every bond we have out there.
Okay. I mean, I know that lawyers pull both sides of the fence, but I do remember Mr. Meyer Henry being somewhat threatening and all of a sudden he's on the payroll. And I just had to ask. All right. Thank you.
Legislative Day of the, that's the sixth of February. Is that right?
It is. It is a council night. So that's why we need to know if, if people are going. I have talked to the mayor about moving. He doesn't want to cancel the meeting. So we need to have a forum and.
I'm not able to attend that. I'll be here that night. So.
Okay.
Anything else for Audrey? Thanks, Audrey.
Yep.
Maintenance report.
I just have a couple of things that I put in my report. I'm still gathering information as far as what other cities do for maintenance fees. So I hopefully will have it, um, at one of the meetings next month, a kind of spreadsheet, uh, of some more information is what other towns do and what we can or can't do as far as that goes. So I'll present that information to you next month. Uh, Mickelson Road update. Mitch said, you know, they're, they're still working on the plans for it. Just let you know with the agreement. Like I said at our last meeting, they're all signed. We have an issue though with Rose Stumpes that before she signed her agreement, her attorney changed some of the wording. And so we contacted her about that. It took her about two weeks to get back to us because she just got back to us this week. And, um, her attorney, I should say, just got back to us and Rose is out of town. She's down south, but she'll be back next week. So we're going to plan to meet at that time and get that all hammered out. I said Larry doesn't like some of the stuff they changed. It doesn't probably substantially change the contents of the agreement. But we just want to make sure we're all okay with how everything is stated.
So will Larry be there for that meeting too? He's in legislature.
We, it isn't set up yet. So I'm hoping, yeah.
He can break away. Okay.
If he's not there, one of the other attorneys from his office.
Okay.
Hopefully that fill in. So. Employee manual. I just want to brief the council on this. I talked with the mayor a little bit about this. I would like to, uh, put together a committee to actually review it. The last time we did a review of the employee manual was 2014. So it's probably about time. At that time, we, we had a couple of people from the council, a couple of people from the staff, kind of, you know, fine toothed it and then bring the recommendations for any changes if any to the council. So I asked the mayor if we could do that again. Just because there's a two or three spots in it that I flagged where the wording's kind of grayish and I'd not get clarified. And so thought this would be a good time to go through it all. So, um, I'm sure he'll be talking some more to the council about that. And hopefully we'll get a committee set up to review that. Fandom Mark right away. Uh, as far as contacting Roger Hugo, like I said, I had contacted him before Christmas. He wanted me to contact him after the Christmas. So I did that last week. He didn't get back to me. So I tried to get him Monday. I guess he's gone for this month. They told me he is out of, out of town for the month. So, um, I will have it on my calendar to call him next month. I'm also going to follow up with a letter too, to send him. So we have something in writing. I did that a few months ago and he did respond to it. So I'll follow up with that and keep plugging to get a hold of him to get something settled with us finally. So we can know one way or the other what we need to do. Gave you a little update on joint jurisdiction. As you know, P&amp;Z was working out this summer. We, first step was updating our comprehensive plan, which we have done. We submitted that to the county. They've had that for a couple of months now. I haven't heard anything back from them. So I contacted Scott Anderson this last week saying where we at. Because basically, once we submit our comp plan, we have to have their commissioners approve it and then give us the go ahead to pursue joint jurisdiction. So that hasn't happened yet. He is out of town. Was out of town last week. He said he would get a hold of me this week. Haven't heard anything yet from him. But he says we can, they may have a meeting and sit down and talk about our steps going forward. But, you know, with the commission as far as pursuing that. Like you know, the legislative session is going on right now out up here. That's where Larry's at. We get weekly updates from the municipal league and may have noticed I'm going to email those to you every week. So you can kind of keep abreast of what's going on. If you have any questions about it, give me a call or you can call them directly or you call our representatives or any other way. But, um, the bond at the municipal league is real good about sending those updates and letting us know what's good for municipal league, what's bad for them. You know, kind of the ins and outs of it all. Larry too is always good about calling me back each week. And if something he thinks it's going to affect us, so that, you know, he kind of gives us a heads up on it. So it's kind of good to have both them out there. And, um, as I already mentioned, we got preliminary plans in for NAP's landing. So we'll be reviewing them. And they plan to move forward into the spring with that. So. Have any questions?
Thanks, Chris. New business. Release the budget funds for the HADC Chamber. Chamber funds for Jamboree Carnival. So I would like to take these one at a time, show them sweet. Something would like to be. So move.
I make motion to release funds for HADC. Do we need the bond on that?
Yeah.
That, which is, where's it at again?
Sixteen thousand.
Sixteen K.
Second.
Any discussion? Arden?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Not many yeses. Uh, the Chamber, fifteen thousand dollars.
I make a motion to, uh, release the funds from the Chamber, the amount of fifteen thousand dollars.
Second?
I'm sorry?
Second.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Discussion. Goldwood, Travis?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Arden?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And others. Third one up is, uh, Chamber Carnival for Jamboree Days, $1,000.
No, no, not on that. They quick. We negotiated the contract and we no longer need the full, probably only need 10.
What, you need 10?
We negotiated it down.
Stan, Craig?
Under budget?
10.
Make the motion to.
Release $10,000?
TV, turn. Second.
Any discussion? Goldwood? Ryan?
Yes.
Arden?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Riley, yes. Moving on. City billboard. Mr. Nelson, this is your.
Hold on.
Uh, there's one more.
Jamboree Committee.
The Jamboree Committee.
Oh, forgot about Jamboree. Okay. Let's back up. Jamboree Committee, $23,000.
Release funds.
Second. Any discussion? Mark?
Yes.
Arden?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Moving on to the city billboard proposal. Mr. Nelson, this is your, this is your pet.
Combination with Mr. Crawford.
Hang on a second.
Yeah.
You got 10 minutes. We're either going to vote on something or we're moving on. So.
Fair enough.
The clock starts now.
Uh, we're very good. Mr. Brennaman, I asked to kind of get a, get a spec, um, which I in turn put Jesse's lap, to be honest with you. Just get a rough, a rough idea, you know, what we're kind of thinking. Um, you know, Jesse had some good input, input as far as, uh, you know, the KISMA, keep it simple, stupid type thing. And, um, and, um, there it is. And I'm going to let Jesse kind of drive a little bit more from here. You know, I would.
Yeah.
Um, and I, and I did convey this to Jesse. The one thing that, you know, with the spec that I have and I'd like to have your input, especially you, right? Uh, would be that, uh, uh, the bottom font, the bottom font is, is dark. Um, and, and, uh, so we, you know, might need some more input on how to make sure that that copy stands out. So I want to, if you don't mind, we'll let Jesse kind of hop on that a little bit. If you're comfortable.
Yeah. This is a draft. This is me on PDF. Yeah, this is a draft, this is me on PDF, if you would, if you wanted to move forward with this, a designer would do it, it would be done professionally, with these words, this type of idea, it would stand out much more than just a black font, I mean, I just put it together for you to see, so you can visualize it. The part of it is a nail home that Hartford, our strength is residential, is new homes, is young families, that's our strength here, it's not construction, or is it, uh, commercial, red industrial, it's not what we have going for us right now. What we do is, families want to live here, if you try buying a house in Hartford, it's impossible to buy a home here. So you want to keep that demand up, of course, we're ready to have a higher supply of homes, to feel people are in, but if we want to use a billboard, it'd be good to tell them, okay. Why are you living in Canistota driving to Sioux Falls every day? What about Hartford? How about Hartford? We have great parks, we have a great pool, we have golf, paths, this can be your next home. Keep it simple stupid, very simple, you leave them with the thought that, oh wow, that's great, my home does not have that, but this new home could have that. That's Hartford, Hartford is home.
Then, is, did it not make it to the packet? It says, in your packet is a draft.
It is, but it's little.
Really little?
It's still little.
I thought that was part of Marco.
Nope.
When I looked at it earlier, I thought that was part of Marco.
Another thing that you'll notice is that, at this point, we, you know, in the agenda, we're talking about billboards number two and three, um, wanna kind of go in baby steps here a little bit, I mean, uh, we're gonna have to use both of them by July of this year, is that right, July?
Yeah.
Otherwise they go bye-bye, or they, the.
We'll have to take down the plywood, if we don't have something, I don't know.
Which, you know, is, is a motivation for just getting these utilized, maybe have not been utilized since I've sat here unless there was some kind of chamber event or something of that sort. So, you know, we've touched on, on the residential side, whether it be billboard two or three, Jesse, do you have a preference?
I, I mean, not, not, not at this time.
Yeah, I mean, probably the one farthest down, if I had a guess, I'd say three. And then, later on down the line, uh, barring, looking at Craig's workload, because Craig, since these are much more accessible than some of the other ones, uh, you know, we would, you're still okay with putting, having the crew put them up? I know you don't like the job, I don't blame you.
I think we can put those up, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and, and, uh, and then, uh, probably, Jesse, you know, commercial side, it's kind of a open-ended book.
Can I jump in really quick, Scott?
Absolutely.
So, you just went in the chamber to get our, our weekly email, the Hartford Happenings email, as you might have seen, the first box in this Creek's email was availability for the city's billboards. I had twenty-one businesses click on that link to see what the cost was, I never get any clicks, I never get zero, zero, one or two clicks, I'm very, very fortunate, I can track this, I can see who clicks. I think if you're willing to negotiate the price on one of those billboards down for a Chamber member or Hartford business, you might be able to fill it up. Because those ones are more expensive than the east-facing ones. Sorry, just, just if you.
No, no, you don't want, that's, that's a good know, I didn't know that, and, and, and I know Mr. Horn shares your sentiment on it, you know, the sentiment, I would have been like to see Hartford businesses on there, you know, I, I kind of threw it out to you guys before, but, you know, if there was a new business, a big enough fish, for lack of a better term, that we, you know, we let them have it for a year, for HR purposes. I mean, it's an open-ended discussion.
We don't have anybody saying they want it right now, right?
No.
So I'm gonna move on, so how about Hartford, Jesse, when people are considering a town to move into, are those the four things that they're interested in?
Amenities, quality of life, school.
School.
Yeah.
School, big one.
And that's, school is very important, school is part of the number one thing that brings people to Hartford, it's by Central School District. I like elaboration, and school does not work as well in that chain.
I know.
That's pretty much why I did put it in there, but, I, if you, if you really wanted to drive home that point, it might not be a bad idea to completely scratch a Hartford thing and do a West Central thing. Because I tell you, as a newcomer to the Sioux Falls area, I have no idea where West Central is, and you don't think I'm alone in that sentiment. I, if you ask the majority, if you ask your average Sioux Falls area citizen where West Central is, and if they're not from here originally, they probably have no idea.
In my opinion, there's four west-facing billboards that need some attention.
Yeah, well, Super Eight is going bye-bye in September, that's billboard number one, obviously billboard number six can be moved and tweaked and whatever you guys plan on doing with that at any time, uh, right now it has Jamboree, a faded Jamboree message on it, um, but, uh, you know, and then you guys, and nor Jamboree, plan on doing anything with that. Now, I can ask a question here, since billboard number one and number six are currently covered, uh, does the DOT timeline go retroactive from the point that they're not covered? Or does suddenly, if billboard number six and.
Well, as they mentioned in the letter, is the two that we don't have anything on it.
Okay, okay, so we kind of.
This is, like I said, those billboards haven't had anything on them for years, this is the first letter I've ever gotten from the DOT, so I don't know if they drove down the interstate and made a list and decided to send out letters this year, because I've never, ever received one before on one, so. I don't think this is a year, when I say that, I don't think this is a yearly thing they do.
One of the other schools, you could do, you could do a Hartford one and a Western Trojan billboard.
Hartford and then West Central, in that order, the two are connected.
Expense on, on, we haven't got too deep into it, but I'm pretty confident, I've got one quote from Checker Graphics, fifteen hundred dollars, not with some of the numbers that we had seen, but in the past. If you want to expand on, on your costs a little bit, um, you know, feel free to do so, as far as, um, uh, you know, that's what I was quoted, um, obviously, timing later with city staff, and I wouldn't know what that would be, Craig, how long do you think it'd take, last time you did that one job, how long did it take?
No, they take a couple hours.
Couple hours, so.
Less time than it takes to remove the plywood?
This year would just go over top.
Right, that's what I'm saying, that's our alternative.
But yeah, if, yeah, if we have to take plywood off, it's gonna take longer, probably two hours, because it's a lot more type, it's gonna be removed more.
I know this is preliminary, but did you, would you consider checking with Great Life, we're talking golf on here, would Great Life want their logo on there and pay some?
I have no problem with that, I'd love, I'd rather see a business on there than I would what we're proposing right now, okay, pretty game simple, I'd much rather see that, you know, but I think Jesse has a point, you know, as far as, well, now Great Life's a different animal, because they're Sioux Falls-based, the rate public should, could, would, should hold, someone's gotta pitch it to them, you know? I can volunteer for that, if you are so inclined with, uh.
There, right now, there's, there's three empty ones and one with a beat-up banner on it, right?
Two empty ones.
There's two empty ones and one with a beat-up banner.
Two with a beat-up banner.
Yeah.
Two of two.
We're dealing with more than one, so we can, we can move forward with a banner, or not.
Yep.
And we can pitch to Great Life, or not.
Right.
And we can lower the price and offer it to a local business, or not.
Right.
So, this is three topics.
We're at nine, ten minutes, I'm sure.
We're at ten minutes.
Okay.
What we're chewing on right now is whether we're gonna move forward with this billboard, this banner, or not.
Okay, how about this, I make a motion that, that, uh, myself and Jesse continue, uh, the, uh, the solicitation for like, for more activation of billboards number two and three, uh, in one of two ways, okay, number one, going with, with the design.
Okay, billboards two and three with, uh, okay.
Okay, billboard in, in.
Number one.
Number one, going with a billboard of our own design, okay? So this is kind of like a tailwind situation, just so you know, uh, of our own design, for residential or commercial, probably residential, also coming back with a West Central message, spec, and then number three.
And number three, got it, okay.
And number three, um, a direct solicitation with Great Life or any other business that we can, be it local or, be it local or outside of Hartford, that we can fill that billboard. And, have a go at that, do you guys want me to put in there?
I need.
I'm not saying, go ahead.
I need a second, don't I, or are you done with your motion?
Okay, that's, well.
Are you done?
I'm not quite done.
Oh, okay, sorry, go ahead.
Let's, let's get a little wordy.
I don't feel wordy, okay. Okay, I'm just gonna say this, okay, I'll, I'll shut up and get a second, then I'm gonna go with discussion.
All right. Is there a second Scott motion to have him, and Jesse move forward with, uh?
We need a second to this.
We do need a second, yes, to discuss.
I'll second only for discussion.
For discussion.
Okay, and, um.
I wonder, I'm wondering if this even needs to be a motion, I think you're looking more for interaction, I, I hear what you're saying, Scott, do you want some, want us to tell you? But, right now, I think you guys need to do a little more homework and come to us with something firm as, a little more firm.
I, I don't mind it being a motion, because, because it involves money. Well, it involves money and involves Jesse.
Okay.
You know, because if it's not a motion and Scott comes down here and says y'all four times a week and drags him on a billboard mission, you might not like that. You know, that's how he's on board for it. I was just saying, I, I don't mind a motion, so.
That's fine. So, who developed this, uh, this, this one, this billboard?
Jesse, this is just a draft, picture that we own, and put it on there. Nice picture.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna expand on that a little and say, I talked to a contractor, so, so how, are you gonna do your development?
Nope.
Why not? Nobody knows what Hartford's really got, so what do we need to do as a city council? Need to promote Hartford, so how can we do that? We got some billboards, why don't you, why don't you let people know what, what Hartford is? Fair enough, called Jesse, hey, this is what I'm hearing, next thing you know, we've got this, and who knows where it could go from there?
Well, here's, my input is, I, I agree to market Hartford in our community, hundred percent, and if it's using billboards, great, but I also think we should, or the development board, should invest for like, we'll say five thousand dollars. And actually work with a marketing company on a, for lack of better terms, a branding of Hartford, so that there's a constant message, whether it's on the billboards, or the literature, you're gonna say hi from Hartford with the cookies and all that, that you have a game plan of step one's gonna be this, step two's, you know, what's the full circle, if we're gonna do it.
Do it right.
Let's have content that, you know, makes sense, and.
Have we spent money on this before? Scott.
We have, yeah.
But where to go, it's not.
Exactly.
That's. Over, over the years, over the years, in, in my humble opinion, over the years, the city's intent at spending money and marketing has not ended well. And I believe it's been attempted more than once, and you can say it had to do with the people involved, or you can just say that, you know, it was just barking up the wrong tree there, I mean, everybody's got their opinion, but. I, in my mind, which I don't recall very good, but I don't ever recall, I don't know how many times we've done that, more than once, and I don't ever recall it ending well. The only, the only thing I recall it ending in is lack of taxpayer money.
When you talk about promoting, what exactly are you talking about? What, what mean, meanings?
How far back you want to go? You know, we can go back to late nineties, early two thousands. You know, and I've heard the word, I mean, you bring up the word branding, I've heard that, that word, the hair on my neck stood up when I heard that. The, the only thing Hartford's ever been branded is on the edge of everything.
And what's that mean?
I have no idea, I wasn't involved in that branding, I, I don't, well, I know who was involved in that branding, and how it stuck, I have no clue. I have no clue how that stuck.
Well, it began with the HADC Chamber of Commerce was not affiliated, or even organized at that point in time, roughly, I'm gonna say two thousand ten, if not, maybe a little.
A little earlier than that. About seven.
And, and, uh, that was, you know, formulated by the marketing committee for HADC, okay? To expand a little bit on that, and on the other thing, I, 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 I'll diverse just a little bit to the point where I think there was a successful campaign, roughly four or five, five years, years ago, and prior to that, when there was a little more aggressive approach, and it did stick. I mean, as far as that saying right there, that's that form of branding we're talking about, I mean, there were people that actually came in, we actually had a jingle that we took ownership of, um, and it didn't cost us anything. But, uh, you know, that was, at this point, the heyday of branding Hartford, uh, and, you know, but we had not done really anything, my gosh, four, four years for sure.
But, I mean, with marketing, we're getting out the weeds, because I mean, ultimately, we're talking about billboards.
Yeah.
And now we've shifted two or three gears, and now we're talking about marketing, and in my mind, that's a totally different subject, totally different agenda. Well, in my mind.
If we're gonna do something on it, let's make sure it's consistent with what we do as a city.
Okay, so, I'm sure Scott and Jesse are gonna make a proposal, I would hope they make a proposal to the couns, council, that has the branding and marketing, I, I hope we're going down that road.
That's why I'm bringing it up, sharing my thoughts of what I would like to see.
That's, that's why I just brought up the fact of, of wondering who was developing, just because if we, I don't think it would be all that expensive to use a company who specializes in making billboards or designing billboards, you know, we're not, none of us are, that's our business, so, maybe we need to look at that as well as an option, so. That's all, that's all the reason why I brought it up.
Let's fire it back, let's fire it back and report on it.
More discussion. Call vote. To sum it up, the vote is to turn Scott and Jesse loose on three proposals.
Would you like it read?
No.
No.
Three proposals, sorry, banners, reach out to Great Life, and local, or not local business. Yes, Jesse?
Do you want to adjust the price to fit more in line with the east-facing billboards, that were, I understand, priced to compete with?
I think we can address that, depending on how the conversations go with local or not local business.
Just, so far, nobody's been interested in them. The prices are the same.
If it were, if it were me, and I was having a conversation with them, people, I would say, would you be interested if the price was lowered? I wouldn't say, let's lower the price and then go have the conversation.
Okay.
I'd say, let's go have the conversation and throw out, hey, maybe we can lower the price, if that would entice you to do it.
Okay.
So, you can always lower the price, you can raise the price after that.
The, um.
Um, the vote was called, by the way, by Nelson, just a little while ago, so. I, I'm sorry, he did say it.
Oh, you're all right.
Thank you.
For the vote, Audrey.
I'm gonna say yes.
Mark.
Yep.
Travis.
Yes.
Brian.
Yeah.
Scott.
Yes.
Just to, may I?
Sure.
Just to clarify that, the, the, excuse me, the, um, premium charge, the cost of the billboard is the same no matter what face, what direction it faces, what's the charge for.
Currently, I have that information in my pocket last meeting, but currently, the ones westbound. Apparently, the ones westbound coming into Hartford are cheaper, and they're westbound by the council, just because they figured local businesses would use that, and they're giving local businesses a break, because they like, want those. The ones going eastbound, they figure more appealing to like a Sioux Falls business, so those are higher, so. The one's two hundred, the other one's three fifty, so there is, there is a difference, you know.
Okay, just curious, thank you.
Alright, moving on. Review and discuss quote for interactive whiteboard display. Mr. Nelson?
Yes, uh, well, this shouldn't take long. Uh, way back in budget time, you may remember I requested that, well, and not only for the sake of all the people sitting in the audience, but the clarity of stuff that comes down the pipe, you know, unexpected. Uh, Mitch, you know, and Rudd things in front of us in, in the past, this whiteboard, and you should have a spec on it. Pretty much it's utilitarian, uh, it can hook up to a wifi apparatus, uh, so that, uh, it can be projected on a screen, we're thinking right over there. It's portable, um, and, um, so we first, the first bid that we received on it was eight thousand five hundred sixty-three dollars. Um, shortly after the new year, I received a secondary quote from Marco when Eric Sally, uh, who was here at one point in time, and the bid right now, uh, for the same product and service is six thousand eight hundred sixty-nine dollars. So, um, um, I think it's high time that we do this. Mitch, um, I'll be honest, sorry, I'm not gonna throw you under the bus here because, but it was basically your idea as far as other, other communities do this, and, 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 and from your perspective, what is the biggest benefit of having something like this?
Well, I think you and I just had a conversation about different, what different communities have.
Yeah.
I don't know what, uh, interactive whiteboard necessarily is, but I can tell you that like in Brandon, I think they've got just TV monitors that they put up on their wall and project up onto their, their agenda and things of that sort. I think Lennox has a similar system. I think they use an, uh, Apple TV or something to project theirs up on there. And then, but Harrisburg, I've actually probably been most impressed with theirs. They've got, they've got either projector or something on a, on a screen that they mount there, but they've got all their agendas where they, they've got them. I don't, you have to talk to Mary down there, but she's got her links and stuff in her agendas where she's able to pull up a lot of attachments and stuff. And then I guess when you have that, it just helps the audience see sometimes what you're talking about, but that's been my experience with something.
And it's that, that's, that's what this does. I mean, it is, it is, uh, something that you can pull up if we needed to go back to uh, the blueprints of, um, if it was archived in a, in a laptop sitting over there uh, from the initial source complex when it was first signed in two thousand fourteen, we could do that. Um, and there's times where we could have used that, you know, in, in this, in this council, so. Uh, it's, uh, pretty diverse. There's training involved with it, uh, and as far as that part goes. I don't believe there's a service plan, just the installation and professional, um, assistance as far as how to use it, and that's it.
So that's the pitch?
That's it. You, you said ten minutes, I went over to the last one.
Hey, I appreciate it, so, uh. So now I guess we, uh, we get a motion to move forward with said wifi white, interactive whiteboard display, or it dies?
Uh-oh.
Did we purchase this?
We, we budgeted ten thousand, so that's in the budget.
Yeah, okay. I just wasn't here last time, so. If we had more, did we have other discussion on it?
This is the first discussion.
First discussion of it, yeah.
I'm not opposed to, uh, I'm not opposed to some kind of system to, uh, to display on a screen or on the wall. Say the information that would be in the packet, whether you pull links up for maps or like you said Scott, archive information. I'm not, uh, I'm not convinced that we have to have cutting-edge wifi whiteboard, uh. Not that you four individuals are worth it, but.
I think there's easier ways to do it.
Well, I mean, that's, that's sixty-eight hundred dollars to get the point across to four people in the audience that aren't looking at the information of, when the, say, staff is. You know, yeah, when you got people standing on Main Street, you know, you, we should get projected out on Main Street for everybody to follow along, but that's only happened once, so. Hmm, no, I'm on some Main Street. So, like I said, I'm not opposed to the idea, I'm just not sure that's the one to do it, so. That's my own humble opinion.
Move table.
I'm table.
Table. Table?
Table, okay.
One second.
Corn.
Any discussion? Oh, there's no discussion on the table, is there?
Nope.
I'm, I'm due, I'm due to marry. I just, I just signed checks, that was, that was in the back of my mind. Okay, there will be no discussion. For the vote, Travis.
Yes.
Ryan?
Yeah.
Mark?
Yep.
Arden?
Yes.
Scott, new. And I'm a no. But.
Well, you have a corner, I passed.
Table passes. Alright, moving right along. Review and discuss security camera options. Teresa's side here.
Okay, well, you guys had me look into this. We talked about it, uh, about a couple months ago as far as, you know, should we have cameras in place or a little bit more security with City Hall here? Um, I had three, I talked to three security companies that came in, that actually came into the building, talked about what we were looking at. Asked them to provide me different quotes. Basically, there's four different quotes. I want them kind of separated, so the council can decide, do we wanna do this one or not this one or whatever? But the first one is just kind of a basic one. I asked them, you know, for a quote for a camera outside that would catch, you know, the incoming traffic and like the cars on Main Street, possibly a license plate or something if needed. And then when they come in, a camera that's in, uh, the business office, in the corner of the business office that, you know, anybody coming in that would go to the front desk, you know, can catch that. The outside one would just be, uh, video only. I figured we did need sound, but the inside one would be, uh, video and audio, so we'd be able to see what's going on plus hear what's going on, so hear any conversations, if anybody gets frowned up or if there's a question about what, what's that? He said, she said, kind of thing, so, um, so that's one quote, so that's on the first line and different quotes from the companies. I also had him come back and look in here, we didn't really talk about it, but I didn't know if the council's interested in putting security cameras in here. We have the camera that, you know, captures our medias, these are council people, well, we know who's here from the council all the time, but these would be maybe pointed at the audience and us if a situation would arise, so I had him pull two cameras for the council room that would have video and audio too. That's the second line of the quote. Um, I also talked to him a little bit about it and Mark threw this out here about, uh, possibly putting up, having a little more access control in the City Hall. Um, I think he talked about it at the end of one meeting, just, hey, can you guys think about this, but possibly putting up when you come in, you know, right now you can come in, go to any office, you know, walk down the hall. We maybe can catch you at the front end, maybe can, I mean, no, nothing's really making you check in anywhere to see who's in City Hall or not. But we talked about, thought maybe right at the end of the entrance, entryway where the carpet's changed, possibly putting up a wall there with a door in it, maybe an access controlled door. Um, we'd have to flip my door around to the other side, but, um, that way, if somebody comes in, they have to go and check in in the business office, so everybody that comes into City Hall is on camera coming in, they have to check in. We know what they're doing there, hey, what do you need? If they need to come back and talk to Jesse or me or whatever, we can buzz them in to get back. So one was about access control. It would be the hardware and the push button to buzz somebody in through that door to get access to the back. That's that third line. Um, that's not putting up the wall or anything. I figure our city crew can do that, don't have a cost on that, but that's something to think about. Um, the fourth quote that I had him do, um, is put in a panic button, uh, on the main counter if a situation arose where we have somebody who's threatening. Um, we've had a couple times where we've had some questionable people in here and you got a little uneasy and we've actually called the the cop, the deputy to come in. We've had somebody else call them, you know, to come in. But this would be a panic button that, um, it can set it up, you know, call a landline, call directly to the metro sheriff's department. Can have it call somebody's cell phone. We can set it up how we wanna, but it could be, we've talked to all of them where you push a button and wherever we designate a standard response or call would go to it, that's where it would go. So that's the, the fourth option there, so. Um, these are all just kind of estimates, they're not hard codes, depending, I said, you know, I wanna give it to the council, see what they're interested in, what they're not interested in, and then we can move further from there if you want to, or if you don't, you know, so. Basically, this is for discussion and get your thoughts on what you think.
Well, I like the idea of the access door, I like the idea of the panic button. And, uh, I think, I think the one camera outside and the one camera in the business office. I don't know that we need the two cameras in here. I guess if if it were me, I'd, I'd move down the road for the door, the button, and the camera outside and the camera in the business office would just hold off on the cameras in here.
Is it expandable to the point where the, you know, if we do like to go with two cameras in the council room later on down the line, they, they can, can do, we could do that?
Yeah, basically, um, all of these systems are expandable. Once they get, you know, they'd have to have a control box either in our computer room or in this room, but you can add cameras to it, so, yeah, it is something we can do in the future. If you wanna add a camera to the hallway or into every single office or you know, whatever you wanna do, it's just adding more ports.
But is there, is the, the mechanism receiving the signal, is, did you talk about ports? How many ports, you know, they have? I mean, the maximum of age or anything like that?
You can buy as many as you want.
You can buy individually if you have one. Okay, interesting.
I mean, so let's say we buy one with six ports and we're, and we're only using two, you know, we've got more ports to expand, yeah.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, I didn't see any.
So it depends on what you buy, so that's why I said, that's why these aren't hard numbers, cause we want to see what we wanna do first or.
Twenty-five years ago, there was two people in here with two offices. And it was Donna and it was Ron. And if, if you blew through the front door, you weren't gonna talk to Donna, you were just going to this office back here, and that was a grown man back there. And, you know, as, I, I think, I think as this town grows, I think these, the reason the door got brought up is because I was down here talking to Teresa and the door opened and somebody, nobody knew, just made a beeline, I assume they came back to talk to Jesse. So you get it out or to steal a car or from, from here, I don't know, but, you know, with, with.
Maybe she's a bachelor.
Well, but you think of the way it's laid out, I mean, Donna's behind the counter, Audrey's in the bomb shelter, Teresa's behind her desk in her office. I mean, you literally take four steps, probably not even four steps, you take three steps through that front door and you got a straight shot to do whatever you want, really, so. I, I think as the town grows, it's just gonna magnify. It's not like it was in nineteen ninety-eight, it's just not.
So when you talk, did you talk to Mitchell and Brandon?
Oh, yes, yes, yeah, I went out and asked cities for a recommendation.
So do they have panic buttons or entrance?
I guess, I don't know specifics of what they had. I asked them, you know, if they worked with a security company, if there was one that they recommend, you know, who would, and they gave me the names of that second one there that I, that I.
Right.
But, yeah, I don't know the specifics of what they actually have, you know, and I can find that out too.
Just, just wonder what kind of access controlled door it would be, I mean, is it something that's open or looks like a jail?
Well, I gotta talk to them about, and like I said, we'd have to buy the.
Yeah, okay, yeah. It's a mechanism you can add, I think.
Yeah, it's a mechanism you put in a door.
That's my idea.
It's a button we push.
I would make it all electricity as well.
And I'd put the whole thing in glass so that it still looks big, otherwise you shrink it back to where it was ten years ago.
At the very least, at the very least, I think we need a panic button. Because I just heard the biggest abusers of methamphetamine are between eighty, forty and sixty. And when you got that age group, it's not kids that are using that stuff. And it's not gonna, it's not gonna be a twenty-year-old that comes down here looking to whip somebody. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a irate man or woman.
I could tell you for a fact, I've been called down here because somebody was down here with an axe before and we used to have, where they'd call us up on our cell phones and just say a word and we knew to come down here and see what was going on.
We have that with the deputies.
It's happened before.
This is, I mean, for, for six hundred fifty bucks or eight hundred bucks, in, in my mind, the panic button at the very least is no break.
I don't think, I don't think one's, I don't think one's enough, to be honest with you. Teresa should have one, Ron should have one.
Well, really, I mean, all, every office should have one, because any given day, Ron might not be at her desk and.
Yeah.
Exactly.
You know, so at any given day, you know, maybe everybody needs panic button. Or maybe not Jesse, cause by the time you get to Jesse, I mean, it's already, the damage is done.
He'll be on his back door.
Here's going to run.
Soon as he hears it.
And we're leaving us nowhere.
But it, but at, at the very least, I think the three, I think the three offices in the front should have a panic button. And like I said, I like the, I like the idea of the camera outside, I like the idea of the camera inside and I like the idea of the door.
Do you even want somebody to get quotes again, get first, first quotes on that?
Well, if that's what you guys wanna, if you guys wanna go with and put it in motion, let's get three hard quotes and, uh, then we'll go from there, but I, I do, I think it's, I'd rather be, I'd rather spend that money on security surveillance doors and buttons than on buttons.
In this day and age, there's more, in the last fifteen years, I can't tell you how many customers I go to that have changed their front ends and all have access doors. I used to be able to, like you said, I used to go and waltz into these places, never even stop at the front desk and go see people, and that, that does not happen anymore. Nowhere, anywhere I go. So this is, this is a sign of the times.
The one thing I don't see is, I mean, maybe I'm just missing it, uh, as far as the door, okay? We talked about clear glass.
No tip prices on all that.
Yeah, I said, I didn't get anything on what it costs to do the wall and the door, whatever. This is just the mechanism, like I said, to be able to press a button and to get in.
The, the door doesn't need to be like a vault.
No, it, it can be a solid door, it can be just a plain glass door. It just, it just would have a button so that we can, okay, you need to see someone, you push the button to let them in type of thing. And we can have that open like during a council, like so people can just come back here, you know.
Have a key locked open.
Tempered steel door, glass, something like two, three. Well, I'll, I mean.
We've already got, it's too bad we, we've already got it ours, too bad we can't just put a camera out there and make them stand outside for twenty-seven seconds while we visualize who it is and then what it meant.
Put a RAN scanner.
Because literally, you said, three steps, you're in here, it's already too late. You know, the only thing you're gonna keep from doing is getting to Jesse or getting from the bathrooms.
Yeah, but you're gonna have to do some rearranging.
Well, we'd move Teresa's.
We'd move Teresa's.
To the other side too.
And then you block off around this first door, so they'd have to come to the second, or how would you do that?
So again, now the costs are going up.
Yep.
And, and, and my question is, why can't you just secure the outside door?
Or can we just put a mess with you?
You have to have some sort of, so how do we, microphone mechanism though, so we can hear them?
So, when, when we get these quotes, you, you have the quotes include a, a camera on the exterior access point that. that goes to a monitor that you three all have access to, or you have.
So would the front, it justifies, so when I'm talking to you, so would the front door be locked all the time? And then they'd have to, like, basically hit a button and buzz and say, hey, I'm here to see, I'm so-and-so and I'm here to see Teresa to talk about whatever, and then buzz them in that way?
And our church, one of our Sunday, we have them too. That's what they have in our church, they buzz outside, they have a buzzing, they have to buzz a button in.
So going along those lines, if you left the front door, if you left the front door alone, put the wall.
You wouldn't have a wall.
You would not, you would not want it, because we'd just be buzzing up to get in the very front door, yeah. Well, that's nice too.
That's how you make it the most secure.
Yeah, that's fine by me, that's fine by me, whatever you guys want to do, so I just, I just think we need to.
You're gonna, you're gonna have some upset customers, because they're gonna be slight, they're gonna be inconvenienced on a cold day for thirty seconds or less, sorry, won't they look?
Well, like I said, and that's actually controls absolutely everybody that's coming in, so.
Maybe that's what we need to do then, just lock the front door, just close the front door in and out.
Somebody, somebody better be setting up that camera room and see who's at the front.
Well, there's always somebody here, I mean, we're open.
Yeah, the monitor ought to be here, when Ron is down.
Everybody.
Well, there's always somebody at the front.
You can come here pretty easily.
I was about to say, I think you need to go to the computers.
I mean, I don't think Jesse would move out.
Arden?
Do you, I don't, I don't think Jesse would need one, I mean, there's never a time when you're the only one here.
Rarely.
But he can sit up at Ron, it's nice to be there, very, very, we're a very rare ever happen.
Okay, so then we need the exterior camera, make lock on the exterior door with three monitors, you know, and then line one, and line, three in line three, or four, three in line three.
If it don't work, you can move that. Can I go and make a motion?
Do that.
I'm gonna make a motion in two steps, Audra, so first step would be to, uh, get a bid using the existing door as an access controlled door, camera on the inside, business office and outside.
Okay, you're going too fast, sorry, okay, so you want, um, to get a bid using the existing door as an access controlled door?
Yes, camera on the outside, camera by the business office, like line one is.
Camera on outside.
And camera in the business office, like the first thing.
Business office, Kate?
Yep, panic buttons in the three offices.
Panic buttons in three offices.
And monitors in the three offices, four offices, we'll even give Jesse one.
Okay, and monitors in four offices.
Yep. That would be option one.
Do we want to, you want us to, uh, vote on that?
This is just for quoting purposes, so I just want.
Do you want to vote on that first and then make another motion, or do you want?
Doesn't matter, what do you want to do?
Can you add in there that we get a, a third quote and, and throw the, the highest one of these three out?
Let's, let's just go with, let's take these quote.
Take this?
Go with the first quote.
So you're gonna get quotes to do it that, the way I just said?
Yep, and I need a second.
Sorry.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Votes? Okay, if somebody else wants, give a different quote.
Do you, did you want to go with part two?
Do you want me to do it?
Go ahead, somebody go ahead.
You want to do it or?
No, okay, I'll say, I'll make a motion to get a price identical to the first option, but to have a secondary access door.
Move it, you know, in, indoor, that's access.
So instead of the front one being access, an access, new door, hallway, move in, whatever you guys feel you need to do, I want to see what that added cost would be.
Okay, so you move to get a price identical to the first option, but have a secondary door.
As, as the access point.
As the access point.
And not the front.
Not the front, yeah.
Yep.
And then with all the moving that you guys would have to do, like Craig said, moving the doors?
Right.
And.
There's one mark.
And, and, and move doors, okay?
I'll second that.
I want to see if it's one thousand, two thousand, ten thousand, right?
Yeah, we'll look at the difference.
And then evaluate if one people standing outside buzzing in there.
Right.
Sure.
Any discussion on that? Ryan's saying that, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Okay, is there any more?
Back to my point, you got, you got two competitive bids here, you got a third wild card.
Yeah, just.
I recommend you get a third, another third, okay, like, I suppose whoever's central school has, I know they have that camera access, would be my suggestion.
Is that a, a council consensus?
I, I don't care who, I just, you told me a three, and I think we're.
In the minutes, I think.
Honestly, when you, I've only heard of one, I've only, I've only heard of one of these, I take that back, heard of two, and, and the one, I was like, really surprised to see it, the, uh, identity, I was really surprised to see it.
But you've heard of them, is that the one you've heard?
I have heard of them, but I've heard of new medical centers, college campuses.
That's the one that's very.
There any more discussion on the, uh, security issue? All right. Well, uh, correspondence, do you want these red?
No, you can, I will, unless Jesse wants his red.
All right.
No, you can just read them unless yourselves.
Uh, executive session, I believe we do have executive session.
Personnel and legal.
Personnel and legal. So I have a motion.
Second.
Who's second?
You.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote.
Hold.
All right, somebody else can have it.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?